Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the September 27th Select Board Meeting, and I'd like to call this meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we'll start the meeting with public comment if anybody wishes to come to the microphone.
Tired. I'm Peter DeAngelo, 126 Meeting House Road in North Andover. I'd like to address a couple of issues which have been on my mind for some time. They both involve the streets in town. Couple of months ago, curbing and new sidewalks were installed on one side of North Main Street. And whoever did it did a great job. It looks great. Unfortunately, nothing was done to the other side. Growing up, I was always taught, if you're going to do something, do it right. And I don't think this project was done completely right. If you want to see it done right, visit Central Street in Andover where they did it on both sides and new curbing, new grass, and it looks beautiful. The second issue involves downtown itself. I've been here in town for 10 years, and I've heard constant discussion about burying the telephone lines. It hasn't been done. It mystifies me how towns like Stoneham and Reading can have their lines buried, and we do not. In addition to burying the lines, I think we should have a unified signage ordinance that would give the look of downtown more, a cohesive look. And I would also recommend instituting a low-interest loan program for store owners so they could upgrade their storefronts. I think by doing those three things, it would greatly improve the appearance of downtown. It seems like we've been promoting retail growth along 125 and 114, and we've been neglecting downtown. And I think any vibrant town needs an active downtown. So I would like to make those suggestions. I don't want to come off criticizing DPW because every time I've come in contact with them, they've been very responsive and very professional. I'd just like to end with two questions. Where has all the money gone that Columbia Gas gave to the town? And what is happening to the money that Amazon is paying for building permits? I don't know where that money's going, but I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Peter. Do we have any other public comment? Okay, thank you. So our next item on the agenda, we'd like to recognize Indra Flight New England, who we are so fortunate to have in our town. Their New England headquarters are in town. They started with their first flight in 1996. They've done more than 80,000 free flights, over 14 million miles. Everything is donated, and it's for patients and their families who are looking for or need treatment that they can't get in the local area. So these flights are donated to the families and they're, again, those patients so that they can get the life-saving medical care that they need. So we are so lucky again to have you in town, and we'd like to recognize your 25 years of service.
Larry, we would like to give you this certificate of accomplishment for 25 years of providing life-saving, free air transportation service to patients who need access to medical care outside of their geographic area. Your presence in North Andover and dedication to our community is greatly appreciated. Congratulations on your 25 years of service.
Thank you, Laura. Thank you very, very much. Thank you very, very much. I know you have probably a very busy schedule tonight, but just again, we briefly spoke before the meeting was adjourned. Again, we want to thank you all very, very much for the tremendous support we get from the town. You guys are just absolutely wonderful to us. The police are wonderful, the fire department. I can't imagine a better community to have a business, and we deeply thank you, and God bless you all for all you do to help us in our mission. Thank you.
Truly, truly, truly a wonderful organization, and boy, the gratitude that you must get from the families, it must just bring you to tears all the time. It's just, it's an amazing job that you all do.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Rosemary. And like you were saying about Timmy Campbell, being at the airport, this is probably one of the finest municipal airports I could ever imagine. We fly into hundreds and hundreds of airports, and the entire community, the airport community, you know, Mike Miller, the airport manager, and Christine, his associate, Tim Campbell, all the FBOs, the control tower, they can't do enough for us. And everyone is just a tremendous community. And I think we're a microcosm of this larger North Andover community. And I think you set the standard, and you set the culture, I think, for all businesses in the community. And so it's a great testament to all of you, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So our next item on our agenda is the public hearing for the joint poll petition from National Grid in Verizon, New England on Sutton Street. So I will entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
A move to open the public hearing for a petition of National Grid in Verizon, New England, for a joint poll located on Sutton Street.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. We are entering into our public hearing. Do we have a representative from National Grid?
Hi, good evening. Dave Boucher, National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street, right here in North Andover. We have a fairly new device that we're placing all over the system, not just North Andover. It's called a feeder monitor. What the feeder monitor does is it measures how much electricity's going through the lines. We place it near our substations. So it's one part of a larger project that we do in order to keep the power back on, to see where the power's going and where it shuts off. So it helps us with our reliability. It's a newer device that we place on the pole tops. On Sutton Street, right near Charles Street, where we have a substation, our lines go underground to pull 216, excuse me, 217, right in front of number 213 Sutton Street. And they come up, and then they go overhead. And what we'd like to do is place that feeder monitor as close as possible to that before it splits up or services customers. That way, we can measure how much electricity is going through. And before you see a petition showing pole number 216-50, and we use a 50 as a half pole. So it's between pole 216 and 217. The reason why I would go to 216 first to see if we could use that as it is, but it's a very busy pole. It goes across the road, and it feeds in different directions, so it was not available. So in order for us to place a feeder monitor, we're asking for that new pole. I want a long way to explain that to you. Hopefully, it was pretty clear. And if the town sees fit, it would enable us to place the pole as shown, approximately 12 feet from pole 216, and go forward with the project that we're planning throughout the town.
Well, it would have been my first question. Why are you wouldn't use 216? So I'm glad you addressed it. So my follow-up question is, why can't you use 214?
Same thing. It's not, the spot where 214 is, is further away from the substation.
So it has to be that?
Yeah, it has to be before we start servicing customers.
I see.
And that's, most of the time, and I've designed these, there is a candidate pole that we can use, and we try to even move things. But in this case, there was really no way to do it but ask for a new pole from the town.
Are there any residences in that area? That's all commercial?
It's across from a Roast Beef Place and the 200 Sutton, which is a business, and the gas station's on the other side. And then there's a couple smaller buildings there, 213. I'm not sure if that's commercial, but it might be. I think there might have been a sign there. But it is kind of far. Is there an accountant there?
There's lots of little businesses down in there, and then there's Buono Bistro is nearby.
Yeah, I don't think there's any residences in there.
If they are, they're across the street, and there might be just like one or two.
I don't even think there is, because that's.
I think they've been sold commercial to tell you the truth.
Yeah, those are two doctors' offices, 213 and the one next door, and then you've got the big office, Doctors Park. And then across from there, you've got the gas station and 200 Sutton. So I don't think there's any residents in that area.
That being said, would the businesses have been notified of this happening today? Yes.
Would it be the businesses or the building owner? Is this going to have any shutdown or anything that's going to affect one of those businesses? In order to do this?
Something like this, they can usually, they can do it live or if they have to switch the circuits out. But if there ever was, we would notify the residents, whether they're commercial or residential, previous to it. So we give them notification well in advance.
But could you make sure you put something on there that when you notify the building owner, who's the landlord, that he notifies the tenant? Because if it's doctor's offices and restaurants and things like that, they're not going to be happy.
I understand that. I'm not part of the notification. I'm pretty sure that our company does that in a regular basis, so I would expect they do. They know that. We don't want anybody to be surprised.
No, not when you've got people coming for dinner later that night. They're not going to be happy if they can't. Is there, can you make a note to make sure that department notifies the businesses? Because I have a pretty good idea.
Because it is a condition?
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'll send something to our liaison for the town in North Andover to let her or him know that and let them go from there with it.
Just knowing the types of businesses there, I don't think they all own those buildings. I think most of them are owned by, you know, a landlord of some sort. Not all of them, but quite a few. You know, there's their office buildings.
One other quick question. How long, like, of a process is it? Like, an hour or two a day?
It can vary. There's a lot to it. I mean, just the placement of the pole could happen, and it might sit there for a month before we actually go through with the rest of the project. There's a lot of things that need to spin around. So once the pole gets set, that might cause us to be able to do something else a half a mile away that's part of the project, on a pole that already exists. So I don't really want to speculate, but the actual placement of the pole, it's probably done in about a half of a day. And if and when there was any traffic that was affected, we would properly contact the police and have a policeman there to direct traffic if necessary. It's sort of a busy area right there, if we had a couple of trucks, you know. But we do it all the time, whether it's a planned or an emergency situation, to get the police involved to make things safe.
Thank you. And just out of curiosity, so the wires now go from 216 to 216-50, and then you attach this?
Then 217.
And 217, but you attach this device, basically, that gets wired into this?
Yeah, it sits down a little bit lower. There's three lines on the top that'll go on a cross arm, and then it sits down about four feet, three to four feet below it, and we're just going in and out of it.
And it's also, you can sort of remotely monitor the electric so that you don't lose power?
That's it. It's got, you know, all the technology now that it sends a signal and measurements back to a computer where someone can watch it in Northborough.
Seems better for those businesses because it might keep them from being without power.
It's all about keeping it on and getting it back on as soon as possible. It really is, you know.
As long as it's not going someplace in the Midwest and we get surprised by a major catastrophe. You all know what I'm talking about, I'm sure.
Any other questions? Then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Thank you. And so we are out of the public hearing. And our next item will be our new business, and we will vote on this joint poll petition for National Grid and Verizon. So I will entertain a motion to approve that.
Move that the Select Board approve the petition of National Grid and Verizon, New England, number 30373447, subject to the conditions contained in the proposed order as presented and include notification, I think, of the business occupants in the immediate affected area.
My second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
It is approved. Thank you so much. Have a good night. All right. Our next item of new business is a request from our Festival Committee to hang the banners at Town Common, High Street, and Main Street. So I will, Rosemary, are you going to?
Yeah, I'll speak to this. So some of you might remember, some people that have been living in town for a while, that for our 350th celebration, which was 25 years ago, we put up banners. And they were, at that time, they were just on Main Street and a little bit of the common. We've since have grown a great deal so that these banners would be where we put our flags is probably the best example. And again, it is in celebration of the 375th anniversary of the original settlement in North Andover. So that we're asking that the banners, it's a little bit different than what's in the documents, but we're hoping to get them up after Veterans Day. We want to certainly give the veterans their due with the patriotic holidays. And they would stay up into May unless there's an interest in taking them, you know, having the farmer's market go up and then ours go up again. But I think at least until May for the celebration, we would have got a little bit of an earlier start except for COVID. But, and this is a rendition of the banner, and it's combining sort of the old with the darker colors, the sort of the, I would call like an Americana red, and the town seal. And it says, "The Original Settlement," and on this spot down below, the donor can have some type of wording, you know, "The Smith Family," or "In Memory of," or sometimes we just, we get all kinds of, kind of just nice slogans, just that kind of thing. But, and that will be put right on the banner, and then the people at the end of the celebration will be able to keep the banner. And what we're working on for the holiday season, because we won't be able to put up big wreaths, that there will be a smaller wreath with the deep red and gold ribbon. So the smaller wreath will hang down here to give a nod to the holidays. So the goal is to get these pretty much up, you know, sometime after Veterans Day to get them up for the Santa Parade, as we really try to do. The cost is $125, but again, you get to keep it. And so that's the request. Jeff Coco would be here tonight, but he's under the weather and speaking to this. This is like a joint effort between, this is the Holiday Decorating Committee and the Festival Committee and others. So it sort of will be something of a kickoff of our 375th, but we do have some really fun things lined up that will be being posted on the town's website soon. We're getting great help from Sarah. And the other thing that we're looking to do as well, which will be a really fun project, and Brian Fraser has offered to work with us, is to have townspeople with wonderful stories about the town or that they remember or they heard, and putting it all on video. And we're hoping to work with the Historical Society where people maybe can view it, and it should be great fun, and maybe pull in some fun activities for children as well. But Brian has offered to do that, our cable person. So all of this will be coming out in the newsletters, and we will be launching a website where you can go and just keep checking to see his different activities that are going. So it will be, the Santa Parade will be a nod towards our birthday as well, and sheep sharing, and the gala will be in May, which got postponed because of the COVID. That will be May 15th, and that will be at the Stevens Estate. And we're really looking for a wonderful evening, great menu, and the new tent, and a great band, and it should really be a very fun event, May 15th. So, and for those at home, we have the new managers for the Stevens Estate here tonight to do a little bit of business, so that's why I'm giving a nod to them as well. But there'll be other events, too, so it should be, we're trying to do some kids' events, and I think it'll be fun. So this will announce to everybody that we are the original settlement of the Andovers. And again, the design was sort of done to kind of be a nod to 375 years ago, but then we did put in a portion of the town seal. So that's it. Does anybody have any questions?
Just to clarify, when you purchase the banner, you also get the wreath, right? Like, that's part of the?
That will be part of the whole thing, yes. I've been working with DPW as to ways that will fasten the wreath. On the black poles, it will probably be hung down below, but on Main Street, they'll probably be nailed to the telephone pole because they'll be so low that they might get hit with trucks.
Yeah, you don't want that.
We don't, we don't want that. We've done it before, but we, at that time, we had all wooden telephone poles, so we have to kind of reconfigure it a little bit. And so the only thing I can say is, if you are interested in buying the banner and you need to get your information in, fill out all the paperwork that's involved. You need to write extremely clearly, because sometimes I'll look at it, and I'm like, I have no idea. I don't have a phone number. I don't know where they live. So you have to really be careful to fill it out. And it's first come, first served. And if you have any questions, you can give me a call. I'm in the phone book.
And where do they get the?
That will be coming out in the tax newsletter in a couple of days. And I think it will be fun, and we hope that we get a good response and get the town all decorated for the anniversary with, 375 years is a very long time. And when you think about it, we've got to be one of the oldest communities in the country. Because when we look at some of our other communities, like even Boston, they're just not that much newer than we are. And so it's quite an accomplishment, a long time.
It'll be a great celebration. Does anybody have any other questions?
So Jake, just the whole thing, just in terms of integrating this with the other parties and events, parties and people, groups, heritage, the farmers' market, that sort of thing. So we've got a way to kind of integrate that? Is that, I just want to make sure that happens.
They'll come off in May, be part of the next.
Okay, good. I mean, that's, which actually, I think, speaks to the heritage of the town. I mean, this is part of the growth, so that's, I think, kind of a nice.
Well, the original founders were most likely farmers.
There you go.
And Barker's Farm and around Lake Atchikawick, hence the town seal, which the backdrop is all the beautiful preserved land that, not then, it was preserved on its own, but now, we've preserved most of that land. And I think it speaks to the type of community that we are. We actually put our money where, to protect the water supply, protect the lake, and to keep the town with these beautiful views and hiking trails and stuff. So that's it, yeah.
Great.
Then I will take a motion.
Move that the Select Board approve, request the Festival Committee to hang the 375th Anniversary Banners at the Town Common, High Street, and Main Street. Oh, it's a sign from the future.
Or from the past.
But DeLorean comes in the room. We're really in trouble. From January 1.
It's actually, that was, it's.
November 2021.
November 2021.
To May 2026.
To May 2026.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. So next, we're going to go back to an item that was on our agenda last time, but we were running late. So we're going to set our fiscal year 2023 goals. Do you want to?
Sure. So I, early this morning, sent an email asking if you'd had a chance if you could quickly send me what your top four were, and I didn't quite hear from Selectmen Valencourt or Selectmen's Medell yet. So maybe if they could quickly tell me what their top two would be? I'm just trying to make it equitable as we go through. When do you want to go first? Can I just pop them in?
I didn't see that yet.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
It's a busy Monday. We know how Mondays are. Oh, that came out today? Yeah, it was just today. Mondays are brutal. Mondays are brutal. So if you could look and just think, what would be your top two of them? I think I put them on the last page. I had a couple of ideas. So one of your big ones, Rosemary, is usually? I've always got a couple. The sidewalk maintenance and expansion? Nope, that one wasn't mine. The pilots with Merrimack and Brooks? I don't have it in front of me. Let me think a moment. We had. You had 114? Do you have any idea what your top two would be?
So are we talking if we're 23 or 20?
Talking about the 23 goals.
Yeah, so it would be the, actually in line with what our public speaker said this morning, this afternoon, continued revitalization of downtown, including improvements, signage, grants.
That's your number one?
That's number one. And then facilities master plan two.
All right. So, Rosemary, we can go, as we go through, we can look.
Oh, here, this is last year.
Well, I do know that.
Another one high for me is technology, continuing to upgrade and secure technology.
Well, one is, I don't think it was on that sheet, but one is always, is getting our affordable number up so that we take more control over development in town, which is always very difficult. Another thing has, it's getting these lawsuits settled. I just think they take a lot of time and energy, and I think we should be able to work through them. We have a couple, just, we have a few lawsuits in town, but I don't want people to get nervous that we're. that we're in trouble or not, but it's, I think it's always better to work with the people and negotiate the best you can and get them, just get them done.
So would your number one be the 40B, the Affordable Housing? And number two would be, I'm just, I'm trying to read them so that I can, I'm trying to create equity in the goals as I give them out here. Okay, so just going over what you all gave me and then we can kind of move things around. So Chris's number one was the maintained fiscal discipline in AAA bond reading. No one else picked that one, so that's an easy one. So that's you.
That's a win.
Laura's number one was collaboration with schools to determine capital and fiscal needs for district. No one else had that one, so we put that one for you. Dick's number one was the continued revitalization of downtown. That was Janice's number two. Janice's number one was resolve issues with the rec complex. Rosemary, I have that as your number two, so.
So it's almost the same thing, it's?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Same, let's just get it done.
So we could put Dick as number one on the continued revital, as continued revitalization of downtown, so he gets his first choice. Hold on one second. And then Janice and Rosemary. Rosemary, do I have your number one as the review and make progress toward the affordable housing? You think that would be your number one?
I think so.
Okay, so Rosemary's going to get that one. Laurie's there with me here as I'm moving around in this chat, probably wants to kill me. And then Janice will have the resolve issues with the rec complex. So you actually each got your number one priority. So then, which is kind of amazing, if you think about it. Chris had work with developers to mitigate burdens of large development in accordance with the master plan. That's his number two. No one else had that one. Nobody chose continue investment in sidewalk maintenance and expansion. I feel like that's usually one of yours.
Mine is usually trees.
Got them to control this year.
Yeah, that, it's, it's usually trees because especially there's, there's actually going to be.
Tree money.
Tree blight in the downtown areas because of Columbia Gas and other things. And that's just not fair. And hence, we got substantial money from Amazon in that area. But that, that was on my review, but.
Yes, okay. So if we add trees, we'll, we can add it again back here. So then the continued investment in sidewalk maintenance and expansion, who would want that one?
I'll take it.
I think we all might want that.
It's just the person who's the lead. You'll all be involved in it, obviously, but just one person to be the, the go-to. So exploring and finalizing pilots with Merrimack College and Brick School as well as reviewing the pilot with, pilot with the end of our housing authority.
I did that in the past, so if you want someone to take that, I'll take it.
You want to take that, Rosemary?
I actually got some money from Merrimack College.
Facilities Master Plan Two is very popular. So both Selectmen Beats and Selectmen Valencourt had it as their number two and Selectmen Nobly had it as their number three. So Selectmen Nobly, unfortunately, I'm going to pull you out of that one because you now have two already of the top ones.
Vaguely familiar with the master plan.
Just a wee bit.
So Laura and Dick, so Facilities Master Plan Two, you both had it as your number two.
Laura can have it.
You're pretty quick to hand that up.
Dick has continued to keep up with technology upgrades and security. Okay, Selectmen Nobly had expand scope and depth of economic development website as his fourth. So we'll keep that because no one else had that. Okay, Rosemary, your number one is going to be review and make progress towards R40B. Who would like the inter municipal agreement for water? This one's going to be riveting, come on.
When Dee laughing like that, I can tell that's not, that's not a one in the office.
Could be worse, could have been for sewer.
Could have been sewer, you're right. I'm putting Janice on that one. She's going to like it, it's going to be fun.
Still a rookie.
Route 114 Improvement in Economic Development.
That's fine. You're a stakeholder.
Expand the use and availability on renewable energy for municipal departments. This is going to be planning that use of the million dollars from Columbia Gas that we're getting to use for energy upgrades for the town for municipal buildings.
Can I take more than four?
Technically, all right. Dick is going to take that one, okay. So then, applying for our new two community compact grants, this one's going to be big in the next, like, month. Because I gave her water, gave her something good. Working with, working with the committee to develop the plan for the use of funds from the ARPA, which is the nine million dollars we're receiving from the feds that we're in the middle of starting a plan for. It's going to be a lot of community engagement that's going to go with that. We're using like a survey program and Laura?
Oh, sure.
I think she's going down the line.
Janice had increase in community engagement as her third. Review of staffing and leadership rank at police and fire departments. Laura had her four, but now we need to give you one of Rosemary's.
Actually, I did, I have concerns about that because the, the police department budget has been relatively flat or pretty darn close if you consider just cost of living that.
Okay, would it be okay if I flip that one over to Rosemary?
Sure.
Develop the field master plan. So Laura had that as her third and Janice had as her fourth. So Janice right now has one, two, this is like trading baseball players here. One, two, three, four. Laura has one, two, three. Laura, this one's yours, rounds out your four. All right, and then finally, we're going to be applying for a grant to share to update our ADA accessibility transition plan.
I'll take that one.
All right, look at that. We did it. So typically, what I do is I actually don't have you vote tonight and I, I sum them all up so you can see them and make sure that everyone feels like the order is equitable. So if that's okay, and we wait till the next meeting to vote, I just want to make sure you can all see.
Well, that'll give me a chance to go.
Yeah.
Same with you, Dick, that maybe there's something else as well.
Okay, good. All right, so that's the plan. Thank you guys.
Okay, so thank you for, I think, asking ahead of time helps too. Yeah, good.
Sorry, I just got to it today, but it did help, immediately did.
All right, so our next item will be our, our town manager evaluation. Right?
Yes.
I guess I don't, I, I mean, I can express how lucky North Andover is to have you. I, your engagement with the us and the community and your vision and goal planning and forward thinking for the town is invaluable because we're not just planning for today. We're planning for 10, 20, 30 years from now, and I think that that's so important. So we are so lucky to have you leading us through that. So I guess I will open it up to everybody to, if you have any comments or?
Yeah, I'll start. I think, you know, the respect that you get from not only your staff here at Town Hall, but from the police, the fire boards, the elected boards and the community itself is just amazing. I think, you know, we never see that more on spotlight than at town meeting. I think at town meeting, the people of, of the town have a great deal of respect and trust in you and, and, you know, respect what you say and what you do. And I think that's amazing. I think, you know, when, when you get up there and you present to them, I think they feel good about what they're hearing and they understand, you know, and I really, that's really important. I think that's, you know, that's just a sign of a really good leader, especially when you've got the, the supports of so many of your staff and everyone. And I also think that in the, you've really empowered your staff as well, which is another sign of a good leader. You're not just dictating, but you've empowered your staff to go out and, and take their own risks and take their own, and, and do their own, do their job, really. And I think that's very important as well, so thank you for all that.
My turn now.
Oh, sorry.
This will come as no surprise to Melissa because I tell her all the time that she's doing a, a great job, that we're, you know, that really pleased, the communication is great. The thing that's just so amazing to me is I just don't know how you get it all done. It's, you just work such long, hard hours and, and everything comes in on time and I'm just, but it's the only thing I worry about, don't burn yourself out. But yeah, the communication is always, it is always great. She, I, I feel as though that you treat every single person, member of this board with, with respect and try to work with each and every one of us with our particular goals and, and concerns. I hear very nice things from the public that you're very responsive. You are absolutely a hands-on person and a great public relations person for the town. And I'm very, very happy that we have you onboard.
Think about where we've traveled since you came aboard, right? And, and, you know, we were getting to know you as a board. We made a choice, right, and went through this whole process and, you know, we both agreed, okay, this is going to be a good arrangement. And we didn't know how good it was going to be. And that really only came out under, under pressure in these situations. And, you know, we can point to all these things, but I think for myself and, and folks who've had the opportunity to work with you is we can also feel your heart, how much it's connected to the decisions and the communication and the care. And while you have an executive role, it's really that heart that people remember and feel. And I would just add to that, I was at CVS this afternoon, sitting there and a fellow looks over and he's, you know, recognizes me as the Select Board. You know, you never know what you're going to get, right? And I, so, you know, I said, always, first thing I say, folks, how are we doing? He go, first thing he said, you know, didn't mention the board anything, he says, the town manager is good. You know, and it just, you know, in the scale of things, when you get that cold right out of the blue, that says everything to you. So that's the way it feels, that's the way this community feels. And we're, I'm excited about where you're helping us go. And, you know, I guess I would continue to throw the challenge, you know, get us there, get us there. What else can we do? How can we make it bigger? Because you're showing a vision that's coming into shape that I, I think we're all trying to focus in on. And I'm just excited about where we can go with your leadership and the team that you've got. That's, that's awesome. It just is awesome.
Can I just touch a little bit on what you said? And you came on when we were falling apart at the seams between Columbia Gas and the COVID and, you know, you touched upon it and boy, you really came through. You really did. Tough, tough time to be starting a new job, but you, you did a great job with all of that. I think as great as anybody can do, of course, we're all still struggling with some of those issues, but it's not, it's not because of anything you haven't done. It's just, things are so time sensitive and, and we don't get to control COVID too much either. We're doing the best we can with that. But sorry to interrupt or add to yours, but.
It's very hard to go last because so much has been said, but I do want to reiterate. I have a whole list of things that I think of when I think about you and the work you're doing here, starting with approachability, accessibility, the way that you build relationships with everybody around you is just something that we can all learn from with your staff, with your residents, with us. It's, it's, you are truly a leader and you do all of that with such empathy and kindness and vision. And it's, it's something I'm so honored to be a part of. I am thrilled, you know, to have the team that I work with and having all of you onboard. But, you know, this is about you, so. I, you know, really excited for what's to come. Obviously, I'm the new one here, so I, I think there's a whole lot to look forward to. So thank you. Can't say thank you enough for everything, the dedication that you have.
I also want to, just real quick, your transparency through projects and the budgeting process and town meeting and it, we just lay it on the table. And this is what it is and this is how we're going to get to wherever we're going. But there's just, just that, I think people feel it and they know it and they can come to you and know that they're getting, you know, you're a straight shooter and it is what it is.
I want to add to that like a tiny bit about how, what I, one of the other things I love is that you want everybody to understand what is happening also. And so knowing that you take the time to make that happen for anybody, anybody who approaches you, it's just, it's such a great asset for all of us.
You guys, I opened my evaluation this morning and almost fell out of my chair. I was like, oh my God. So I'm so thankful. This has been such a good experience for me. You know, coming here, obviously from another community is, it's always a gamble. Is it, am I going to like it as much? Is it going to be as good? It's fun every day, mostly because I have the most amazing team, right? So I tell people all the time, I'd be absolutely nothing without the 162 people who show up here every single day and make this community run. And, I mean, two of the very best sitting here with me right now. So without this team, you know, I'd be lost. So I am incredibly blessed to be here and I'm looking forward to many more years with all of you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to make sure you're happy?
So happy. It's, no, it's perfect, right? Because it's, Dee can tell you, because we live, if anyone in public home will know, we live two streets away from each other by accident. But it, it's so nice to be able to come back to work, be here on Saturday to come the Fall Fest or, you know, to be able to be a part of the community, not just at work, but also with my family has been, I think, the best part of being here, so thank you.
So for anybody who is interested, the evaluation is attached to our agenda if anyone wants to look at it. But we, I will entertain a motion to approve the, the performance evaluation for our town manager.
I'm sure the board of selectmen, or Select Board, approve the annual performance evaluation of town manager, Melissa Murphy-Ravie.
Any other discussion?
Oh.
I'll take, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
That's something we could do forever, if they hear, instead of saying, I will go yay.
All right, and so we'll move on to our last item of new business, which is a request from the Affordable Housing Trust to disperse $100,000 from the Housing Trust to a down payment assistance program.
Now, if I could speak to this as part of the Affordable Housing Trust. So this is a program that the Affordable Housing Trust has been working on for the last few months and is to put in place a mortgage assistance or a down payment assistance program for first-time home buyers. And the definition of first-time home buyers differs a little bit, but for first-time home buyers for up to $30,000 for the first-time home buyers to be able to afford a home. They have requirements that they must meet and one of that is to be able to also have at least a 1.5%, I think it is, of, of a down payment towards a home. They have the ability to, if they stay in the home for over 10 years, the loan is forgiven. If they sell the home within the first five years, they have to pay the loan back in full and then it gradually 20% decreases each year after five years until 10 years where it goes down to zero. So it's really a tremendous program to help first-time home buyers to be able to achieve that homeownership. And I think it's just another great example of what this Housing Trust does here in North Andover. And just, you know, to highlight a couple of other things that the Affordable Housing Trust does is, you know, we support organizations like Bread and Roses from Lawrence who come in and they buy distressed homes, they rehab those homes and then they sell those homes at affordable rates to first-time home buyers. And what the Affordable Housing Trust does is we, we loan them the money to, to get that started and then some of that is paid back based on, on the deal that's made. But, you know, a great, great program to get people into homes. We've also had senior assistance programs where we try to keep seniors in their homes by making loans to them with similar conditions where they have, you know, after a certain number of years, they don't have to pay them back. number of years, they don't have to pay them back, loans are forgiven. But it's to do things like maybe fix their roofs or make the house more accessible for seniors. So it's really intent to try to keep seniors in their own homes so that they can, you know, they can stay in place. And then during COVID, we had multiple rental slash mortgage assistance programs to try to help people who were, you know, in trouble during COVID or maybe have lost their jobs. So a lot of great things at the Affordable Housing Trust and this is just another program that we're putting in place to try to help people get into their first homes. So I'm hoping you'd, you'd support this. And Laurie, who is leaving, was, was the, yeah, was the, was the leader of that group, the chair of that group for a number of years as a, as a citizen. And she's responsible for a lot of these, but the group is made up of some great, great folks. Christopher G. is the chair right now, Barb Benatton's been on for quite a while, he's a treasurer, Joan Fitzgibbons, who's a real estate agent here in town, George Cola, who just, I cannot say enough about that man and what he does for people in affordable housing. Actually, his picture was in the paper the other day in front of a Habitat for Humanity house that he was helping to build. And then Roger Lawson, another great person in town who gives a lot of time. So a great board and, you know, I'm always proud to be on, to be in those meetings or on those boards because it does really tremendous work. So, so I hope you'll support this, this other program.
You know, I'd add one thing about down payment assistance programs. I actually just saw the statistic a couple of weeks ago. The, it's awesome to have it. One of the things that is unfortunately prevalent is folks don't know that this is available. There was a survey done of prospective first-time home buyers and found that 47% of first-time home buyers did not know that they qualified, not just that it was there, that they qualified for the sort of program. So, you know, there's, you know, an opportunity for us here.
We'll be working with Sarah.
Yeah, that's really.
To put that information out. And we're also gonna be working with Bread and Roses, we'll be kind of, we'll be administering the program for us. So they'll be reviewing the applications and going through that whole process.
That's great.
There is another program that sounds similar. So I'm just wondering if, if when this money's gone, that we could maybe let people know, the NACA program? Are you familiar, familiar with that?
Well, that's, right, that's a mortgage program. So they can go through NACA and get this at the same time. It's just like there's the one program that, that's housing. They run.
That's another really great program that a lot of people don't know about and I love that program because they, they need to come to it with education, they go to schooling, and they also need to buy in by saving enough money that they'll assist, but then the borrower or the purchaser has to have enough money saved for the emergency so that, God forbid, something bad happens and then they can't, they're out of their house before, they're barely in it. So it's, it's kind of similar to what you guys are doing. So that would be another, I mean, this, this will only go so far and then to inform people that there's other programs also available. Really good.
Any other discussion, questions? I will entertain a motion.
Move that the select board approve the disbursement of $100,000 from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund for a down payment assistance program.
A second.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent.
Next, Dick.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Great pro, another great program that we have. So I will turn it over to the volunteer subcommittee for, we have a lot of appointments, so they've been busy.
Do we want to go through each?
Yeah.
I'll read them.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. We have been meeting with a lot of people and there are still more. So if you want to apply, keep, keep those applications coming. But we have met with a lot of people and have some appointments to make tonight. We would like to appoint Maya Chin to the Commission for Diversity, Equity, Inclusion. She is actually a town employee in the water department, so maybe her and I will get to talk about her. She was, it was a really interesting conversation, anyway. Courtney Igbinosa is going to be joining the Patriotic Observance Committee. She is a phenomenal senior at North Annover High School who loves to sing and finds, thinks that that is one way she will be able to contribute to that committee. She has big plans and I can't wait to see where she goes. Walter Mina will also be appointed to the Commission for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Walter currently works with the Merrimack Valley Project and is involved in many, many, many different facets of our community and this is like a great match. Dick and I also met with Frank, actually, do you want to do the rest of them? I do three, you do three? I don't need to take them all.
Yeah, no, so Frank Reganisi, a longtime resident of the town and a 30-year, a member, or 30-year assessor from Ipswich, is joining the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. He's excited to give back and to be able to work with seniors. That seems to be a passion of his. Scott Patrick Lane, a software engineer, so he's gonna be joining the emergency management team to try to maybe help them with some of their technology needs. We reached out to the, to the emergency management team and asked them if that was a, you know, something that they needed and I think they were pretty enthusiastic. Jeff was pretty enthusiastic to get Scott on the team to help them with the technology. And then Bernie Zetlich, who is a longtime member of the community, he used to run the North Annover Citizen years and years and years ago and has been around for quite a bit. He is gonna be joining the North, Neighborhood Conservation District Commission, Machine Shop Village. So a really good group of volunteers and again, you know, we can't thank the volunteers enough, including the people around this table, for what they do to keep this town running and make it a great place to live, work, learn, and play. So it's really, you know, fantastic and we, as we always say, the, the volunteers in this town are really what makes it run and click so, so well. So thank you to all these new members of these boards and to all the existing members of boards.
Any questions or discussion?
Let's keep these boards filled.
There we go. I'll take a motion.
So I move that the select board appoint Maya Chin, Walter Mina to the Commission for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Courtney Iambigosa, Igbinosa?
Igbinosa.
Igbinosa, thank you. Apologies, Courtney. To the Patriotic Observance Committee. Frank Reganisi to the Elderly and Disabled Taxation Fund Committee. Bernie Zetlich to the Neighborhood Conservation District Commission. All of those through June 30th, 2023. And Scott Patrick Lane to the Emergency Management through June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody who volunteered and interviewed and like Dick said, we, our town runs on all the volunteers and the people that are willing to step up and serve. So, thank you. So I will be handing it over to our licensing chair and I will entertain a motion to open the licensing commission.
Madam Chair, I move we open a meeting of the North Annover Licensing Commission.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Okay. There we go. Just got a few things. Starting off, public hearing, and this is an application of Joshua Weber of the Fireside Catering LLC for an all alcohol on-premises restaurant liquor license at 723 Osgood Street. And I think we have someone here to speak to that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman of the License Commission, Madam Chairman, woman, town manager, selectman. You people probably know this better than I do as the architects of the contract that have put this deal together. However, we're before you today for the liquor license application for the Stevens Estate with Fireside Catering LLC. I have with me today Jeb Weber. If you have any questions for Mr. Weber, who's one of the managing members of the LLC.
Can I interrupt for one second? Point of order, Mr. Jeb, do we need to open a hearing? Do we need to vote to open?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. We shouldn't vote, my apologies.
It's okay.
So we had a motion, and we have that seconded.
No, I'll make a motion to move the open a public hearing of the application of Joshua Weber. We didn't ever do this, right? Okay. Fireside Catering LLC for an all alcohol on-premise restaurant license at 723 Osgood Street.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
As a selectman in my own town for six years, I was gonna say, say something, but I didn't want to step on anyone's toes. So glad to be here.
We're all good, we're all working it through. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. So anyway, I have Mr. Weber here, who's one of the managing members of the LLC. If you have any questions, Mr. Weber. I also have Mr. Brian Kobelski, who is the applicant to be the manager of Wreck-It to be approved by the board this evening also. Do you have the application? If you have any questions, certainly I'm glad to answer any that you might have. It's pretty straightforward, we're looking for a full-service, all-alcohol restaurant license, got a Section 12 license for, a new license to be used at the Stevens Estate.
From the board? Any questions?
It doesn't come with a surprise, we weren't expecting it.
And just so you know, once their application is approved by the ABCC, we will release our license, so it'll come before you to be released.
What, what's roughly the timeframe for that, do you think?
Laurie's saying six weeks, I think that's probably about right. Yeah.
So the town continues to maintain the license until?
Will continue to hold it at that time.
Until that time.
It puts us right before Thanksgiving.
Perfect timing.
That's what I was thinking.
Timing is everything.
Thinking about that, okay, okay.
So there'll be overlap?
There will be overlap, yes.
Is our liability, we?
We, we will continue to hold our liability, we're continuing to hold all of our insurances. And Humara, who is the current manager of the license, will continue to be working there, so.
Perfect.
Any other question? Then I'll hear a motion to close the public hearing.
So, second?
Oh, Mr. Chair, do you just want to see if there's any public comment?
Okay. Do we have?
All right, thank you.
Absolutely, okay. Got a motion, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearing is closed. All right. So now we will have a vote on the application from Joshua Weber of Fireside Catering LLC for an all alcohol on-premises liquor license at 723 Osgood Street, as was just discussed in our public hearing. Any other?
Madam Chair, I'll make that motion just as you just said it.
I'll second it.
Great. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. And now we have an application of Joshua Weber of Fireside Catering LLC for a common victor license and entertainment license at 723 Osgood Street. Seems like a good thing to go along with the alcohol license. Do we have a motion for that, please?
Mr. Chair, I'll move the select board acting as license commissioners approve the application of Joshua Weber of Fireside Catering LLC for common victor license and entertainment license at 723 Osgood Street.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'll defer.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. We received a call today from one of the abutters. He's fine with the license, but just requested that perhaps the speakers could be moved away from his house. It's Mr. Howe at 660? Osgood, I believe.
He indicated that he hasn't had?
He's at 665 Osgood. He hasn't had any issues with it. He just has a suggestion with new owners coming in.
He's a direct advisor.
I think the same sensitivity we've had with Stevens Coolidge, you know, as a community, you know, we've had a little more integrated experience with us now and I think kind of, it's a great chance to start off on right foot. So I think just sensitivity to that, fabulous, you know, maybe even just a knock on the door or call to them, say, thank you, we hear, would, would just go a long way to get it going.
Certainly. And as you all know, that, you know, the Weber Group through different entities, including Fireside Catering, operates on a number of different, you know, historic locations as well as private locations. So they've been sensitive to the neighborhoods and the neighbors in all of those situations and will continue to do so.
Much appreciated, much appreciated. We're excited for this.
And there's just one other thing.
Yes, sir.
I think defer to the, the commission, but do you have to make a separate motion for the approval of the manager of Wreck-It?
We do not.
Since it's included in the application?
It is.
Many times I have a separate vote for the manager of Wreck-It, but that, that's fine if you, if you all consider it included.
We only do a separate vote when we're doing a change of manager, other than that we do it as all one across the vote.
Fine. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, so let's, we've had our motion, our second, we just need our vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You are good to roll. Waiting for the ABCC.
So excited.
And hopefully in time for Thanksgiving. That would be great. Have a good evening, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have an application from Tricia Dunphy of Smolak Farms for six one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for fall festivals in the Farm Stand tent on October 2nd, 3rd, 9th, 10th, 16th, and 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and a request to waive the police detail, so.
Good evening, Deb Ingles with Butler's and Bars. I'm actually standing in for Tricia tonight. She's with her dad who's ill, so I'm gonna step in. I know all about her events and I do all the bar service under the main event for Butler's and Bars under Smolak Farms, so very familiar with everything. So any questions I can answer?
Well, we've been, we, you know, we see these very.
We've done this a few times before. How many? Well, come on down, because there's some, they have great themes every week. They're all dressed up, a lot of, it's been, it's been great, you know, a lot of visitors coming in. Nice to see business coming back to our, to the farm.
Well, it's nice that you've got some good weekend weather, other than what, the month of June and parts of July.
Yeah, it's been really good. It's been a long summer.
It has, it has.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So how many people do you expect at these events and why waive the police detail?
Because, well, I know just from being, doing the events, the private events, but I know it is open to the public. It's very seldom that you see more than 50 people under the tent, if even that many. It just kind of, people just come flow, it's very family-oriented. So people just come, you know, go through the, looking at the animals and picking the apples and doing all the activities, the rides. It's always constantly flowing and they really have the, the traffic under control, make sure people are secure and safe under there. So they really run a tight ship. They have a lot of people over there.
Okay, I'm just looking for.
They do get a detail for traffic.
Traffic is separate, though.
Yeah, they just don't have someone underneath the bar behind them like we do.
Okay, so they'll have someone that, okay.
Yes, yep. Just not for the license.
That's, that's an important clarification.
Yes.
Appreciate that, Deb.
Oh, they do, yeah. Especially on the weekends. Yeah, it's busy and people just kind of, on Sundays it's kind of a little quieter because, you know, football's back, everyone's doing their thing. But they come in the morning as family and then they're back on the couch, so, you know, having fun.
It's a great asset to the town. I mean, people know us because of Smolak Farm, I think sometimes it's like, oh, that's a place.
They work hard, they really, it's.
An angel play.
They really work hard, yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Then I'll hear a motion on this.
I move that the select board acting as licensing commissioners approve the application from Tricia Dunphy of Smolak Farms for six one-day wine and malt liquor licenses for the fall festivals held in the Farm Stand tent on October 2nd, 3rd, 9th, 10th, 16th, and 17th from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. and further move that we waive the police detail for all events.
Okay.
I'll second.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All sit there. And then we.
And then now, I'm Deb Ingles, I own Butler's and Bars. So I'm the bar service that does the weddings and the events under the tent.
It's the companion to this.
Yeah.
That's how it gets done, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions?[1761.65] So, it's the companion to this. That's how it gets done. Right, we got it. Any other questions to fill the address?
Did we get clarification from Officer Lannon?
Yes, we are good to go for all of the small weddings at night. And we talked about how they are currently applying to do catering, which will alleviate the one-time licenses hopefully soon.
That's our goal. We'll see.
Works for all of us.
It really is. It's a lot of work. It's, listen, I have enough work to do. Sitting on the computer.
Aren't you gonna miss coming to CS?
Oh, I love coming to these meetings, sitting here two hours after working since the office. No, they're great. I haven't been home yet today, but that's great. I get to see all these happy faces. No, it really is. Everyone, I, you know, Melissa's been wonderful, and the clerks' office, they really have, they've been, you know, there's been a lot going on, and they've been really great with working with us, and I can't say enough. And it's to hear the evaluations about Melissa, absolutely. She's been very sweet, very approachable. So, it's a pleasure to work with her.
So, we have a motion for...
I will move that the Select Board, acting as Licensing Commissioners, approve the application from Deborah Ingles of Butler's and Bars for six one-day all-alcohol liquor licenses for wedding receptions in the large event tent on October 2nd, 8th, and 15th from 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., October 9th from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and October 16th and 23rd from 4:30 to 10:00 p.m., and further move to waive the police detail for all of them.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. All set.
Well, thank you very much. Hopefully, I'll be for you soon with my 12C and what we discuss. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right, have a good evening now. All right, and our last piece here under licensing is an application from the 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC for a change of officers at 267 Chicaring Road. Is there anybody here to speak to this from the 99?
No.
Guess not. Well, we've got the full paperwork in here. Looks like standard documentation. No other comments from any other department. So, I'll hear a motion if we're comfortable with this.
Okay, I'll move that the Select Board, acting as Licensing Commissioners, approve the application from 99 Restaurants of Boston LLC for a change of officers at 267 Chicaring Road.
Appreciate it.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, done. And now, just a motion to move out of licensing.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Thank you.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, back to you.
Thank you. All right, so we're on to governmental reports, and our first item is, our only item, is our meeting schedule. My only, I, my only conflict would be Monday, April 25th, and I ask, I'm asking the board if we could move that to the Wednesday. It's our two-year delayed Disney trip.
Oh, my God. Jeez. That's definitely...
We want to get in the way of that. I look close to those little boys.
Don't we knock it on you?
No. Well, I think that the policy of the board is we always try to help another member out when they can't make it. Because instead of just saying, "Oh, no, that's when it is," and then you miss. We don't like that. So, I would absolutely...
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Yes, of course.
Anybody else?
I'll go with that. Do we need to...
And continues to be flexible, because things come up for other people. So, yeah, I think we really try to accommodate. That won't be difficult. Oh, wow.
Yeah, absolutely.
I appreciate it. My boys will appreciate that. We don't have to vote on it, right? We just, no, okay. Excellent. So, we will move on to consent items. We have an updated list of special municipal employees and an affordable unit resale of 44 Empire Drive. Any discussion or questions?
Just a notification for the folks at home who are enthralled by our meetings here. What, yeah, what is the list of special municipal employees?
Sure. So, it's somebody who's either not paid, or they hold a part-time position, and then they're able to actually do two things within the town. So, a lot of the time, if you look at the list, it's people, it's committees, because you may serve on two committees at a time. For instance, you may be the Board of Selectmen and also serve as a liaison to a committee. Or it also can be people like election workers. But the designation is assigned to the job, not to the individual, and it just allows them to do that.
Okay. Well, as you have a second job, basically.
Basically.
Okay, got it. Thank you for the clarification.
I will take a motion for, to accept the consent items.
I'll move the Select Board approve and accept all consent items.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. And we will move on to the open session meeting minutes from September 13th. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Had time to review?
As I recall, it's all, I'll move that the Select Board approve the open session minutes of September 13th, 2021, as written.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. No old business tonight. So, we will move on to our town managers report.
So, the restaurant group got their liquor license on the Stevens Estate. I was like, oh, I'll update on the Stevens Estate. No, so we're, we've been working really hard on the transition. They've been amazing. They have two salespeople up there working now, already taking inquiries. Humara has been a trooper in closing out these last month of events, and there's been some weekends where we've had an event Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. She's got Margie up there helping her, and they've been an amazing team. We have been working on all the surplus items. Some of them, we were actually able to donate. So, Laurie has taken care of that and has been amazing. She's gonna be slugging a whole bunch of silverware and cups and plates and, but it's, it's really gonna be, I think, great when we get it all cleaned out and it recognizes the potential left there. So, we're, we're really excited about that. So, that's going really well.
Before you move on, I think I remember you saying that you did have, was it Kathy Ziska to help you go through everything? So, I don't want people at home to think that we're just getting rid of everything.
No, no, no. We went room by room, and we have an inventory of everything that's in the building. We marked off anything that was historic or needed to be moved, and anything that we, was questionably historic has now been moved into the room where the furniture is, where the Moses furniture is. Steven Moses' furniture, his bed and everything is now in that room.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So, that we're very careful.
That those don't touch, yeah.
Yep, and a lot of the furniture and stuff is being kept, and some of it, they're gonna actually repulster. But, yeah, and then the friends in the library actually went through all the books and took any books that had any historic significance to the library, so that we wouldn't have any chance of anything bad happening to any of the books there.
Yeah, like a first, like a first edition or something.
Which was a huge undertaking, because if you remember just walking through there, I mean, there's, there's hundreds, thousands of books. They were, it took a long time, and I'm very thankful to them for that. So, yeah, it was really a collective effort. But, you know, there was a lot of things on the third floor that were, I think, probably still from when B.U. owned it. And so, it's, it's a nice, fresh start to get all that stuff out, so...
Speaking of that, and I didn't want to put them on the spot, because we're here for other business, are they still doing holidays?
So, they're trying to decide. They want to do something. They're, they're committed to doing holidays for next year. This year, they're a little nervous that they're gonna be doing their construction, but they're committed to something. They may just want to do it a little earlier. So, instead of doing it kind of, they asked, could they do it the first week in December, which I think would be fine. But they're committed to doing something this year, so we're working with them on that. Okay, it's gonna be exciting.
And just so everybody knows, October 15th is the date.
15th. No, don't lose me a day. October 15th. No, October 15th is the day. That, so, yeah, it's, and there actually is an event on October 15th. So, right? Yeah, and so, it'll be a nice turnover, right, for that first person. So, isn't that funny? Yeah, then we ended up booking something on that day. So...
And the tent's still up?
The tent is still up. It'll be coming down soon.
Right.
I can't remember if we ends up extending the week or not. Do you remember, did we?
The Friends will have their book sale.
The Friends are, we extended a week. The Friends are gonna have their book sale, and then that closes it out. So, for the season.
Mass Audubon will take on.
And then Mass Audubon actually signed the contract today for the management of Mass Audubon. We will not be doing the conservation restriction for another couple of months, because they want to survey the land where all the leaves have fallen off the trees. So, apparently, I didn't know that was a thing, but it is. So, we're doing that. And then we'll, we'll have that finalized as well.
That's amazing.
It's really exciting. Yeah. Yep, and FONAD has been involved, and it's, it's really been an awesome collaboration. So, we're psyched.
Very good. Thank you.
No problem. And then my second item that I have here is with my friends Tina Klein and Lynn Wenzel. I think they're here, right? Do you guys want to come up and sit up there? You're welcome to. You don't have to.
I didn't recognize you.
So, we've been working together for a little bit more than a year about how they had seen an exhibit in Arlington of banners celebrating Black History Month and how that would be a great thing to, to have here. And so, they've come up with a program where they would have 16 banners that would have black people from North Andover who have ties to the region or the state, and would highlight each of them. And their plan right now is to design a banner for each of those people, and they would like to have them up on banner poles around town. And this year, obviously, we had the conflict with the 375th. So, working together, we came up with this idea that instead of putting them up in the first year, we would host them in different town buildings. And there would be kind of a QR code that you would scan. It would take you to a biography of the person. And we would create a map. I don't know if you guys remember the Halloween map we made last year. But we'd create a map that would be interactive, so you could actually click on it. You could see where the different, different exhibits were. You could go and visit them. You could learn that way as well. And so, the more we talk about this, the more excited I get about it.
It's a great idea.
Every time, every time we talk to the phone, I'm like, and then? And then we could do this? But one of the really cool things about this is that we, we were talking about how we're gonna fund this, and the cultural council applications are out right now. And I think it would be a great project to be funded by that, that way. So, we're working together on it. The hope is that in future years, the banners would be hung. But in the first year, it would just be this really amazing community project. And they're working together with the Merrimack Valley Black and Brown Voices, the North Parish Racial Justice Team, the Native Historical Society. I know our diversity commission is dying to get involved as well. But we're really excited about it. Did I get everything?
Yes.
Okay. So, we're super excited. So, we wanted to update you about it, so you would, you would know we had plans. But I think it's gonna be pretty amazing.
Yeah, it's a great idea.
I will tell you, in the town of Andover, they, they use like a portable pole. And they ha, I, I never even realized they had good-sized portable poles that you could even put them all in front of the museum or, as you said, move them around or things like that. But supposedly, there is a portable, good-sized pole that would make it even more fun, because you could have them outside or inside and, you know, in front of some of the schools and other places as well. So, just something to look into. I, I suppose we could ask how they got their pole in Andover, but just something to think about.
Yeah, because that is one of the things that we'll have to figure out, is how to display them, if they're not going to be on the banner poles around the town. So, yeah, that's, I didn't know that that kind of thing existed. So, that's great.
I'll try to look into that. It was one of the selectmen told me about it.
Oh, great.
Wanted for something else, and I thought, wow, that's a great idea. So...
You know, we don't want to add, you know, a lot of significant cost onto the project.
Of course.
Because we're looking for local council funding and possibly private funding as well, you know, people find their banners, similar to what you're doing for the, for the 375.
So, and this would be commence February 1 or now?
This February.
This February. Good. Great.
But also, the, the concern is that we can have them on the common the following year.
Yeah.
So, and the following year. So, if we're going to invest the money in this, that we would be back up on the common the following year.
Great, great. Cool. Got it.
Awesome. Good collaboration. Love it.
Thank you, Melissa.
Happy to. I'm telling you, so excited. And then three other just quick things, I promise. I just wanted to announce that we do have, we have been certified with $12.9 million worth of free cash. It's a lot of free cash. We did, we did think this was going to happen, though, because we knew we were getting the $6 million Amazon fee, and we knew that was a one-time revenue source. So, you know, last year, when we decided to use free cash as a revenue source for all of our capital, and people were nervous about that, right, that was a really good decision, because we knew this was gonna happen. But still, kudos to Lynn and our finance team, because $12.9 million is incredibly impressive, and she does an amazing job. And then we have hazardous waste.
I mean to refer to, but that sort of goes back to our public comment earlier.
Yes.
From Mr. D'Angelo that he was wondering.
Made me think of it. Yep. Well, you'll see it at town meeting when we're spending that free cash, that $6 million, yeah.
But right now, it's just kind of sitting in an account, right?
Yeah, and it was more than we thought it was going to be, because, you know, when we first started estimating, the permit fee was between $4 and $5 million. But then, it ended up being more than that, because the cost of the project went up. So... And then, just a reminder, the hazardous waste day is October 9th. We're very excited about that. And then the lake cleanup is October 16th.
Woo-hoo, that's a nice spin.
Hazardous waste day is my favorite. I think I want paint, yeah. And then, yep, and the Lake Chickahoga cleanup. So, October 16th. So, lots of stuff going on, things that we didn't really get to do for a year or so. So, it's good to be able to do that stuff. All right, thank you.
Any Select, Select Board member updates or comments?
We had a phenomenal fall festival. It was, it was a great day.
People were definitely happy to be out and super grateful for all the volunteers that took. So, we had some amazing high school students who spent a lot of time taking orders from us to keep things moving along. So, it was great. And thank you to everybody who attended. Also, our last farmer's market of the season is this Sunday. So, help us end on a strong note, and come on by. We'll be there from 10 to 1. And if you want to help set up our cleanup, we are always happy to have you.
And you have an artisan market coming up?
Yes, it's, the date is October 17th, I think. Is that, yeah, October 17th is the artisan market, but more to come on that. Their banners just went up.
I don't have anything tonight.
Then I will, I lost my page. So, our next meeting is October... 12, October 12th, after Columbus Day. Yep, okay, so we're Tuesday, not Monday next time. All right, excellent. So, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.